... meeting for August 30th at 7:02. Let it be noted that Ms. Phillips is not here and there is no alternate present. I wish to announce that should any items on today's agenda take more time than anticipated, the public hearing may conclude at 11:00 PM and be continued to another date which will be established at that time. Any items not heard by 11:00 PM tonight will be heard at the continued public hearing. For the record, petitions one, two, and three, 443 King Street, 1166 Barnum Avenue, 1166 Barnum Avenue, and 433 to 4th, excuse me, 443 to 445 King Street will not be heard tonight. They're continuing on September 27th, 2016. Commissioner Fuller, would you like to read petition four?
Sure thing, Madam Chair. The petition for 2278 Main Street, Sherri Frank, special case as required by Section 14.2.2 and Section 1 of the Stratford zoning regulations, will be now heard in record.
Is the petitioner here?
Yes, ma'am.
You can come up and... For the record, petitions to be heard this evening were advertised in the Connecticut Post on August 17th and August 24th. These properties were doled posted on the August 23rd.
Madam Chair, excuse me for a moment. I just spoke with Attorney Ben Proto. He is actually representing the petition in all of the record. However, I have three items...
On the administrative portion of your agenda this evening, and due to the fact that you don't have five members, I would like to hold them over until September's beating.
Okay.
Thank you.
So that's going to be continuation.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Benjamin Proto, on behalf of the petitioner. Question before we begin. I'm happy to make the presentation this evening. I would like to ask that the matter be held over to your next administrative session and to allow Ms. Phillips to listen to the tape, to be able to participate as well. As this is a special case, obviously, four votes are required for the approval or denial, whatever it may be. So I'm happy to make the presentation so we don't have to come back and do this again, but I would ask that the commission not take this up in session this evening until Ms. Phillips or an appropriate alternate has the ability to listen to the tape. It's not going to be a very long presentation on my part, and then to take that up at another time.
Okay.
Thank you.
Just a point of order, Madam Chair. Well, this is something the commission is also very similar to protocol that the commission has practiced in the past. If there's three or four members when you need, particularly a special case where you need four votes, it's generally been general practice to give the petitioner some deference on not having a decision made that night until a full commission is seated. Though by a public hearing, I think it would be safe to entertain evidence into record tonight for the public hearing.
Though it hasn't always happened that way, has it?
Sometimes. And it's also with the Board of Zoning Appeals, I've seen that happen as well.
Thank you. Madam Chair, may I... Sure. I have item five on the agenda, Madam Chairman, and I will not be proceeding this evening because of the number of commissioners present. So if you could continue number five to the next public hearing, I would appreciate it.
Okay.
That's 900 access road. Thank you.
You can't make it up, Dave.
If anybody else who's on the agenda for later on tonight, could you please wait your turn? Please. Attorney, go right ahead. No one else will be interrupting you.
Thank you. Madam Chair, I'm handing Commissioner Posner our letters. Please note that the green cards are not attached, as I've not received them back yet. However, I have attached the tracking information from the United States Postal Service website that shows all four were delivered. Interestingly enough, they were delivered on August the 15th, and today is August 30th. It's only Stratford mailed in Stratford. I still haven't gotten the cards back yet. Madam Chair, Commissioners, I represent Sherri Franks, who is the petitioner in this application. This application involves the property located at 2278 Main Street. 2278 Main Street, as you're probably aware, is located in an RS4 zone. The particular piece of property in question, to the best of anyone's knowledge, particularly mine, has been utilized as a commercial property at least back to the early 1950s, quite possibly back into the 1940s. And for those who have been in Stratford for a very long time, it used to be known as the Bonton Fish Market, which I understand was in operation at least in the early 1950s and probably back to the early 1940s, and has been used as a commercial property continuously and has never been used as a residential property. But be that as it may, the property is located in an RS4 zone. Ms. Franks is, has applied through the special case process pursuant to Section 14.2.2 of the regulations, which would allow for an existing nonconforming use to be continued as a nonconforming use, so long as a couple of items are met. First and foremost, that there's no structural changes to the building and structure. In this particular case, the only structural change that's being proposed is the addition of a ramp to make the property handicap accessible in the rear in ADA compliance. And as Mr. Habansky's memo indicates, that would not be something the commission would consider as a structural change for purposes of 14.2.2. The other item would be that the use that's being proposed is less intensive for all practical purposes than what has been there before. Previously, the property housed a consignment store thrift shop. Prior to that, I believe, was a real estate office. Prior to that, I believe it was a tax service during tax season. For those of us who have been involved in politics far too long in this town, it served as headquarters for both the Democratic Party and the Republican Party over various elections. It's housed other professional office buildings, and as I indicated, back in the late 1940s to early 1950s, was a fish market. What Ms. Franks is proposing for the property is a commercial use. Ms. Frank operates a psychic reading, life coaching business. She operates currently, she has two existing facilities where she does business, one in the city of Boston and one in the city of Fall River, Massachusetts. She recently had two in the city of Boston, one of which was, she's recently closed due to the building that she was located in being sold. The reason Ms. Frank is looking to establish a business here in Stratford is many of her clients travel from Fairfield County up to Boston or Fall River to visit with her, to meet with her, and to conduct business with her. And she's trying to get closer to some of her clientele rather than have them drive a couple hours to her. She thought it would be better and easier for them to be able to meet with her more locally and to expand her business. She's doing quite well and is interested in expanding her business. As I indicated, the, we believe the use is a less intensive use than was there earlier, particularly the most previous use, which was the consignment shop thrift store, which was open to the general public, had a front entrance, people could come in and out through the front entrance. This particular business would be an appointment-only business. Any walk-ins would be asked to make an appointment to come back. The primary entrance of this building would be through the rear, not through the front, as the parking is in the rear. The property has sufficient parking, so no parking issues are there. Mr. Habansky in his memo had indicated that he'd like to see the commission impose a stipulation to have the parking spots striped. We have no problem with that, and would, if the commission so desires to do that, we're fine with that. We have no issues with that. What I would like to do is to discuss some of what the business is not. And I know that there is kind of a understanding among some folks as to what this might be. And I say this with Ms. Franks and her husband sitting here, and I say this with all due respect to them and what they do. She is not a carnival sideshow. She is not a circus act. There is no seeing eye out front. There is no bright neon. There is no crystal ball on the front. She meets privately with her clients, one-on-one, and conducts her business. There is no pylon sign. There is no building sign. There's going to be no changes to the building. It'll be a very discreet location as it is now. Business will be, patrons will enter the business through the rear. What she is planning on doing, if you've noticed the building lately, it's kind of become a bit tired in its look. She's indicated that she'd like to repaint it the same color that it is. No color changes. I believe it's kind of a neutral color now. It will remain that way. The property is located in the historic district. As such, we will have to go to the historic district and just let them know what we're doing. Again, we're not making any changes to the building. We're not putting any signage on the building. We're not changing the color of the building. We are putting the ramp in, but again, much like the commission's purview over an ADA requirement, the historic district would also be constrained in its ability to restrict an ADA compliance issue. And I don't think that's going to be a problem. So in short, and again, I said my presentation would be short and be more than happy to answer questions. Ms. Frank is looking to open up a business here in Stratford that would service clientele from the greater Stratford and Fairfield County areas. It's an appointment-only business. She operates these businesses in other cities in New England. She is a very good citizen in both the city of Boston and in the city of Fall River. Her clients enjoy what she does, they respect what she does, and they look forward to her services. And with that, we believe we comply with the provisions of 14.2.2 and the nonconforming, continuation of the nonconforming use, and we would ask for the approval of the commission for that use. With that, Madam Chair, I'm happy to answer any questions.
The commission have any questions? I just have one other. Hours of operation will vary, I presume.
The hours of operation would vary, but I, in my conversations with Ms. Frank, I don't think they would go much past the early evening, six or seven o'clock at the latest. Again, by appointment only.
Does the commission have any... Commissioner Fuller?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Attorney Proto, I have a couple just kind of generic questions. I know the hours of operations vary, it's based on appointments, and I imagine it'd be, they would be constrained to like nine to five, or nine to six, or something within some sort of reasonable time. Two questions I have, based on Ms. Frank's businesses even in Fall Rivers or in Boston, roughly how much traffic does she see going through, I guess, a busy day and a light day? I know with appointment, it's not really, you know, people walking in and out the door per se.
But again, I think her businesses in Boston and Fall River are also by appointment only, and her clients, she has a pretty consistent client base that call and make their appointments and come visit her in those locations. My understanding is that on a very busy day for her, would probably less than half a dozen. In Stratford, in Boston, it probably is more than that, just by virtue of its size and its location. Fall River, probably a bit less than Boston, and probably a bit more than what Stratford would be. I don't anticipate, and I don't think Ms. Franks anticipates, that there's going to be a line of cars and a line of people waiting to come in and making appointments along those lines. It's a relatively quiet operation, and the people who come to her are usually by themselves or with one other person will come in and conduct their business and leave.
So you imagine mostly just one or two people, customers or clients for a better term?
At a time.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, again, the space, and you've got the floor plan for the space, and as you can see from the floor plan, there's going to be nothing done to the interior, so it's a singular space. So if one of us were coming to Ms. Frank, we would come to meet with Ms. Frank on our own, and then when our appointment was done, if there was another appointment, the next person would come in. She may have some group meetings when she does some life coaching or some chakra, but for the most part, it's very small to one-person groups.
That's pretty much all the questions I have. Thank you, Attorney Proto.
Commissioner Posner.
Hello, Attorney Proto. Just a couple of quick questions. Appointments, will they be taken seven days a week?
No Sundays. No Sundays.
No Sundays.
Monday to Saturday.
Will there be any employees?
Other than Ms. Frank? I don't believe so. No.
And so we're thinking no overlap, right? Since it's only, I'm sorry, who's Ms. Frank? I can't...
She's answering.
Hi, how are you? So there's going to be no overlap then with clients, since you're the only one going to be there, you know, offering the services? And can you tell me a little bit more about the actual services that you're going to be offering?
Yes, ma'am.
Would you be able to?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Because I'm just a little unsure of what the actual services are. Thank you. Thank you.
Just state your name and your address, please.
Sherri Frank. The address is 2278 Main Street. What are your questions?
What are the services that your business is going to be offering by appointment?
I do palm readings, tarot cards, meditations, chakra balancing, life coach. That's it.
And life coaching. Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Anything else?
Or do any of those need any kind of certifications or licenses?
No.
No? Okay, thank you.
Any other commissioner? With that, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close.
Members of the public.
Chairman Papin, we got to ask for anyone in support, public to speak, and opposition.
As you can tell, this is my first time here up in front here. Do I have any member of the audience in opposition of this petition? Just state your name and your address, please.
Sure. Sean McKenna, 65 Francis Place, behind the property, living behind the property there. Just a quick question. Is Mrs. Frank, are you renting or are you purchasing the property?
The property is being, she'll be a tenant. Mr. I believe it's McCowsky owns the property, and he's, will remain the property owner. And Mrs. Frank will be just simply a tenant, as has been, I think, what Mr. McCowsky's owned that property for a relatively long time, and all the businesses that have been there before have been tenant businesses.
Parking, parking was mentioned earlier, and I think I heard there's sufficient parking, but there's going to be some adjustments to, cosmetic adjustments with parking stalls for parking fines?
Well, we have sufficient parking to meet the regulations. The zoning administrator in his comments to the commission has suggested to the commission that a stipulation that he would like to see them impose is that we stripe the parking place, so we create, I'm sorry, we create parking spaces. That's obviously up to the commission to determine whether or not they want to do that, but it's Mr. Habansky's recommendation, and we are supportive of that if they so choose. It's not a problem for us.
That's all I got. That's all I have. Thank you.
Wait.
Attorney Proto, you said there's no, I just want to just clarify this, no structural changes, no cosmetic changes?
Other than the ADA ramp, nothing else?
Other than the ramp, nothing. Okay. And is there a lease?
Yes.
And how long is the lease?
Presently, it's a two-year lease, and they also have the first right of refusal, which is not uncommon in a commercial lease. If Mr. McCowsky were to decide that he wanted to sell the property and he had an offer, they would be given the right to match the offer. So it's presently a two-year lease with the, I believe, the option on both their parts for renewal.
Okay, thank you.
Attorney Proto, will there be any advertising? Will there be a sign out there or something stating that this is going to be?
There's no pylon sign. There's no freestanding sign. There isn't one there now. We're not asking for one, and there isn't one on the building. I think what would probably occur in what she does in her other shops is, she has a window shade. It will not be like the wireless store. I promise you, it will not be like the wireless store in the center of town. It would be a shade covering for the window, which would have a very kind of muted advert, you know, sign on it as to where that's her business, but no neon, no flashing lights, no, we won't be, come in and get your plan changed.
No, thank you. No, that's all.
No.
Is there anyone in the audience in favor of the petition that would like to speak? Is there anyone who would not oppose or approve, but make a comment on the petition? You can come forward. No? Okay. And commissioners have any more questions?
I'll make a motion.
Make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you. With that said, I think there are no more petitions. So we will call the public hearing. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? No. Thank you. We'll take a five-minute break.
Thank you.
Have to tell the time. Commission on August 30th, 2016, at 7:36 PM. We will take 443 King Street, 1166 Barnum Avenue, 1166 Barnum Avenue, 433 to 445 King Street, and those are continuing on September 27th, 2016, per the petitioner. Next is 2278 Main Street.
Motion to take that off the table.
Originally, the petitioner said they wanted to wait until we have one more commissioner, but during the break, we decided that we could discuss this, and if we wanted to take a vote, we could take a vote.
And motion, take that off the table.
No, second.
Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And we discuss 2278 Main Street.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I see this as actually a less intense use than what's there right now. It's currently a consignment shop by the Episcopal Church, which I imagine gets a lot more traffic than a by-appointment business. The parking, I think the stipulations from the parking that zoning administrator Jay Habansky has referenced, and also the attorney for presenting the attorney, also referenced that the client, or the petitioner, is also very amenable to those recommendations. I mean, I know they wanted to have, wait until they had four, five sitting members, but that's probably because it's a special case. I don't see any issue with that. I like this petition. I think it's pretty straightforward.
Do we want to discuss if it should go to the historical district committee? Or?
Madam Chair, it has to.
Yeah. It has to. Okay. So we'll just stipulate that it...
We can make that a condition of approval.
Go to the historical approval from them and to, I think we should also make a stipulation that, you know, the signage is to a minimum. And as Jay stated, the parking spaces be painted.
We could stipulate that we take a look at the proposed sign before it's put into place in some sort of administrative session. And the historic district commission may also make recommendations per signage as well, because just so public education 101, historic district commissions, very similar in some respects to zoning and very different in other respects, they do not look at the inside of buildings. So you could put neon lights and everything on the interior. You can't have it on the exterior. What HDCs are primarily focused on is the exterior aesthetics of a building that's of similar-like historic era materials.
Any other discussion?
Yeah. I just wanted to say that I think, just given what the sign regulations are, this being in a residential zone, the amount of square footage of signage is minimal already. And as Commissioner Fuller mentioned, that, you know, I think the historic commission will probably have some comments on the type of signage, so I think that that might be covered there. I would be hesitant to, and I don't think anyone has suggested it, but just hesitant to regulate what is said or what is shown on the sign. I just wanted to make that comment.
I concur with that as well. We're not supposed to regulate content, only the form or the medium itself, medium being the type of sign, the size of the sign, the materials of the sign, but not what's said on the sign unless it was something gratuitously obscene or something like that, which is not the case in this situation.
Any more discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve with recommending that it goes to the historic district for them to, to, I guess, approve or put any kind of conditions on it, or, I guess, to approve or put any kind of conditions on it that they see fit. Now, would that have to come back to zoning with their conditions?
No. No. I mean, you could approve based on...
What they're...
Based on any conditions imposed by the historic committee.
Okay. So approve based on the conditions imposed by the historic commission. Also, that, I'd like to stipulate a time of closing. The hours of operation, we were told, probably no later than seven. I'd like to put a stipulation on there that eight o'clock for closing. And also the signage, that Attorney Proto said that there would be like no neon, no light-up signs. I want to stipulate that those are not allowed or acceptable for that business. And that's pretty much all my conditions.
I didn't hear that. What was that?
The sign.
No, not the sign, the hours. What did you say about the hours?
Hours of operation, not past 8:00 PM.
Oh, okay.
How about the strike bench?
Yep. Yeah. Yep.
The parking, the parking condition as well, that the lines are defined and you can see how many parking, how many parking spots were there, by the way?
I believe there were five, might be six.
And the owner works alone, so one client at a time, that shouldn't be a problem at all.
Yeah, there still will be some open spaces as well.
Yeah, because there's no parking on the road.
The only issue with parking would be actually, I believe, were there going to be classes or group classes, we were told?
Potentially.
Potentially, which we didn't ask and we should have, was how many people were we expecting at these classes? You know, with her experience working, I believe, in Boston, and I'm sure the classes are probably offered there, are we talking 10 clients, 20 clients? And how often are those classes?
Two to three?
That's-
Two to three.
Okay.
That's what they're saying, two to three, not me, it's-
What was that?
They're saying two to three people for the mostest. And you have, what, five spots?
Then the parking, I have no, I have no issue with the parking.
Plus, we don't have anybody against it, right? In the neighborhood, everybody was for it so far.
Commissioner Florak.
In addition to that, just right across Main Street, there is Academy Hill, Judson Place, there's a lot of Von Street parking there for people who visit the Historic Society, Crest Episcopal Church, St. James's Church, Academy Hill Park itself. So if there is any overflow, there's already receptacle for that parking. I mean, people always have to look both ways before crossing Main Street, but we're not really adding significant pedestrian traffic to Main Street.
Agreed.
With that said, 900 Access Road, petitioner asked for contingency because of missing commissioners. So we'll pass on that. 795 James Farm Road, 795 James Farm Road, 795 James Farm Road has already been discussed. Approval of minutes of July 26th and August 9th. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any discussion?
We already took the vote, so discussion's moot at this point.
I'm going to waive the rules for 200 East Main Street, so that Attorney Florak can make a motion.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Okay. Have a motion to waive the rules?
A motion to waive the rules.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Four zero.
I've come before you tonight in the administrative session, because as you are most likely aware, the court, the Superior Court, sustained the appeal that was taken by 200 East Main LLC from this commission's denial of the special case application of euphemistically to put the Popeyes Restaurant at the Dock Shopping Center. In doing so, the court ordered this commission to approve the application, the special case application, and the coastal area management application, but remanded it back here to give this commission the opportunity to establish reasonable conditions on that approval if you were of a mind to do so. Now, there's two options. You still have one day to take an appeal to the appellate court, or at least to seek an appeal to the appellate court, because it's not automatic in zoning issues, from the decision of the court. I wouldn't recommend it. I think the judge's decision was, would be pretty hard to overturn. He felt that there was no substantial evidence in the record of the hearing before this commission to justify the denial. I thought myself that there was evidence as to questions or issues with respect to traffic circulation within the shopping center and issues like that. Judge Radcliffe felt differently. Reasonable minds can differ. And since he's a judge and I'm not, he's more reasonable than I am, I guess. So my recommendation is that you shouldn't, you don't have to take an appeal. I think it would be very difficult to overturn the judge's decision. Second option is to go back and look at the situation with respect to the special case criteria in Section 20.2 and the site plan criteria in Section 20.2, and to impose conditions based on that criteria on this, on this project. If you felt that was necessary to protect the public interest here. And to make sure that the site plan objectives and the special case criteria would be adhered to. In that respect, you should look at Section 20.2 and specifically Section 20.2.2.2 of the regulations. However, after the decision was reached and handed down by Judge Radcliffe, I had conversations with Attorney Willinger, who represented the petitioner. And Attorney Willinger obviously read the decision the same way that I did with respect to the power that you have to impose reasonable conditions. And he indicated a willingness of his client to agree to certain conditions, which he would suggest to you. I have some plans showing that, those conditions. But essentially, what he is proposing is that the building be, let me backtrack on this, two commissioners here heard that petition back in 2015. Two commissioners did not. So to two commissioners, it's going to be new. What happened in the summer of 2015 was that this commission denied the application. And the reason stated in the record for denial of the application was that the commissioners voted against it, felt that it was too intensive a use for that site. That ship has sailed, the court has said it's not too intensive a use for that site. But other specific concerns that certain commissioners had was that the traffic pattern, the traffic circulation for this project was hazardous. The location of the drive-through window did not allow for a long enough queuing line in the opinion of some commissioners. The area where the drive-through was going to discharge its traffic, discharged it into an area that, where the sightlines were not really great, and discharged it into an area where traffic that was parked in the adjacent parking spaces located next to the discharge area might be backing up, and therefore it would create a hazardous situation. So that was the ostensible reason. Attorney Willinger has indicated to me and shown on these plans that his client is willing to change the plans for the drive-through area, to move the drive-through area to the other side of the building, which would provide for a much longer queuing line, to discharge the drive-through to the front of the building. And while there's still parking spaces adjacent, it's not unlike any parking space within the shopping center, all of them back into or discharged into an accessway or a driveway. But these have much better sightlines. There are some other incidental revisions, proposing to put in a sidewalk into the, from the parking area into the entrance, clearly demarcates it, change some landscaping and shrubs and the like. So those are his suggestions. And what I'm going to do is I'm going to hand these to you for your review. Now, timing-wise, you want to pass those down? Timing-wise, it's not critical that you do anything tonight. Popeyes, since they have their approval from the judge, obviously would like to begin their project as soon as possible. However, technically, you're still in the appeals period, at least by one day. So you have another administrative session coming up, probably, what, at the beginning of September, Jay?
September 13.
And then another administrative session after the public hearing in the end of September. So you have some time to take a look at what they propose, to study the regulations, and to see if those proposals are, will satisfy any concerns you have, or whether there are other items that you want to talk about, such as, you know, moving some parking spaces, although I don't know how that, how they have the authority to do that with respect to their proposed lease of signage that you feel may cure any hazardous situations you may, you may think exist. Maybe the location of entrances, exits, et cetera. There was some concern with the original application that the accessway from which a left-hand turn would have to be made, that that curb cut was not wide enough to safely categorize and carry the traffic. As Judge Radcliffe pointed out, the width of that accessway is more than they're required under the Stratford zoning regulation, so they're not going to do anything with that. But there are, again, as I said, some revisions that they've made. Section 20-2 talks about the criteria required for special cases and site plan approvals. And so there are other areas of consideration that you may want to take a look at. And with that in mind, that's where we are presently.
Attorney Florak, I have a question. I read the decision, and in the decision, he says the issue of congestion was not raised by the members of the zoning, it sure was.
It was raised in your decision. What he found was wrongful was that they presented traffic experts, and nobody questioned the traffic experts at that time. No evidence in opposition was put into the record by anybody in, you know, in opposition. So the traffic, the traffic experts give their testimony, nobody has any questions, nobody does anything. And then when you decide it, people are saying, well, the traffic is a problem, and Judge Radcliffe felt that if the traffic was a problem, then those questions should have been raised with respect to the experts, and they should have had the opportunity to, you know, to respond to any considerations that people may have had. So that's why he said congestion was not adequately addressed in the, at the hearing.
Yeah, just as a side note also, I received correspondence from a roadway analyst from the Connecticut Department of Transportation regarding this matter, and said that the applicant for this project still needs to acquire their, an administrative decision from the Office of State Transportation Administration through DOT, and that the town of Stratford is not allowed to issue any building permits or zoning compliance applications until they receive that. I was told that can take months to receive that potentially. I don't know, I think it's-
I would have to say that as far as any zoning compliance, if the, if they apply for some type of certificate of zoning compliance for some reason, at this point in time, they have the Superior Court decision that says it complies with zoning. So I don't think DOT can tell the town of Stratford what to do as far as that goes, especially since there's a Superior Court decision. With respect to the issues of any building permits, that's a separate issue.
That's what I mean, not a zoning decision here.
Right.
Just the zoning compliance application that goes in conjunction with a building permit.
Right, and there's nothing from the court that says the town has to issue a building permit, so.
So what I was saying is that might be something that we want to consider adding as a condition of rule, that they do receive a potential condition, that they do acquire their OSTA administrative decision prior to applying for a building permit.
So that's my presentation. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to take them. If you want to talk about it, I'd be happy to discuss it. If you want to deal with it at your next administrative session, that would be okay too, because the judge didn't put any time limit on our imposition of these conditions. However, it should be reasonable time, you know, given the circumstances, not exceedingly complex, so it's up to you.
Now, Attorney Florak, you had mentioned about an appeal. Is that something that we would have to vote on as a commission, or?
Yeah, you'd have to authorize it.
But do we have to vote to not appeal or to appeal?
No. If you, if you, if you, my recommendation is you don't appeal. If we don't appeal, and tomorrow's the last day, although we'd have to calculate it, it might be Thursday, but if you, if we don't take that appeal, we can't take an appeal. However, and normally, we don't take an appeal unless the body, the board authorizes it.
My question though is, maybe I'm not saying this correctly, do we have to take a vote either way?
No. You have to take a vote if you want me to appeal. Otherwise, I'm not going to appeal.
Okay, yeah, I'm not in favor.
It just expires.
Okay, I'm not in favor of appealing it. I mean, this is a discussion, obviously, we need to have tonight. So I'll put on record, I'm not in favor of appealing it.
I don't want to appeal, I don't want to, it's just-
There's no smoking on evidence to justify an appeal.
I do have one question, I don't even know if, I've got to go there. I'm going there. That traffic light's 13 seconds coming in from East Main Street under the Vidoq, that would be going west, east to west, east to west, yeah, I think.
Two or three cars.
West to east? Yeah, turning in on the left there, I mean, I go by- Taking the left into the access. And if you're not paying attention, you get four cars in there, and that light turns. Today, I was able to see six, with a motorcycle go right through a red to make that left. I mean, that's a state, East Main over there, isn't that a? State road. Yeah, so there's, that 13-second light is state. We're not going to change that, I mean, I have a better chance of seeing God. You can't change that, and quite honestly, I agree with you. There's been an innumerable amount of times that I've sat there waiting to make a left and had to wait for two light changes in order to get through. Right, because we have a few. It's clearly, it doesn't appear to be enough time. But that's a state- But that's a state traffic commission jurisdiction, that's not our jurisdiction.
Well, we have a few of them in town already that are those 13 seconds in certain areas, which I won't even go down the road to, but we have those, in fact, and like I'm getting at, that's, all right, I got to answer that, I just like, because that bothers me, I mean, it's just, probably bothers everybody, but nobody's saying anything, I don't know.
So, my question, I guess, is more for Mr. Urbanski. Are we going to receive the original traffic study reports, and just a full set of...
I can give you that from the record, if you want, from the record of the original hearing.
Just because if we are going to be talking about conditions, I'd like to actually thoroughly read through everything.
Yeah, and I was going to extend invitation for everyone to come into the office, or go to listen to, listen to the tapes. I would recommend coming in, looking at the site plan, spending some time, and going over it.
I was there for the public hearings, and I was there when the commission made their decision, even though I wasn't elected at the time, I sat there and I watched it all, so I'm well aware of what happened and all those, I just want to have the paperwork to go through.
Sure. Yeah, I mean, we have the file in the office, and I recommend everybody come in prior to the next administrative meeting, take a look at what the original plan was, the revised plan, and then, you know, formulate, you know, what conditions you think might be appropriate and reasonable to attach to this. Are the plans that you handed out, that's the revised set?
Those are the revised plans, those are not the original. Those revised as of August 25th of this year.
Okay. So, do we have one extra set for the file? Because did every commissioner get one?
Every, I only had four, every commissioner here has one.
Okay. Well, I'm going to have to commandeer someone's.
And make copies of it.
Yeah, and I can make copies, exactly. Thanks. By default, you're closest to me.
Madam Chair.
Yeah, I'm just going to make a note on them here. I still welcome everyone to come in and look at any testimony or anything from the file.
Madam Chair.
No, we don't either.
Commissioner Fuller.
Oh, yeah, in addition to the original plan, I think October, November, following that, there was a proposed settlement plan that the petitioner put forward during the appeals process. The commission voted 3-2 to approve, but needed a fourth vote to be approved by special case.
That's correct.
That might be worthwhile looking into as well, just because there might be some stipulations on conditions that were useful in that particular petition, that we could kind of use as inspiration, or use as some context or basis of comparison to aid us in this discussion as well.
My understanding is that the plan that I passed out to you tonight is the same plan that was presented in the settlement discussion, except for some minor revisions. They added a sidewalk into the entrance from a parking area, they indicated that the drive-through lane was going to be concrete, they changed certain grassy areas to mulch in order to coordinate with the rest of the site, and they changed the shade trees to honey locusts in order to coordinate with the existing shade trees on the site. My understanding is those are the only changes from the plan that they submitted as a proposed settlement, but I don't know that for sure. Jade, do you have a copy of that map that they submitted, those plans they submitted for the proposed settlement?
No.
I'm not sure, I'd have to...
I do not.
Dave, I'd have to look and see, I'm not sure that I still have those, but I think that the, from what I understand, the plan you have in front of you is it, basically it.
Is mostly what was submitted as the proposed, compromised to the...
Right.
Then appeal.
Yeah, I mean, the only significant detail, I think, that they appear to have added is a sidewalk from the entrance into the parking area. I don't think that was shown on the plans that they submitted as a proposed settlement.
Attorney Flora, I'm sorry, go ahead, Commissioner. I don't, thank you. I'd also like to get a copy of the original plans. I'd like to see how significant the changes are from the original submittal, just because I have nothing to compare it to here. There was, I guess, questions on the traffic, and the traffic patterns, and safety, and stuff with possible accidents with cars backing up. I don't have anything now to compare it to, I see this new plan here, and what I want to know is, was there a significant change in the footprint and the structure? Are there significant changes in the traffic patterns now? I don't know anything about that now, because I don't have the originals.
And Jade does, you have the originals in your file.
I invite everybody to come in and bring your plans, and you can examine what plans, what changes have been made, and you know, I'd be happy to sit down and work through it with each one of you when you come in.
I can tell you from my eye, that the significant difference is that the drive-through window was, it was located, on the plans you have in front of you, in the original building, the drive-through, if you're standing on East Main Street, looking at the building, the drive-through window was on the left side toward East Main Street. They've now taken it, and they've moved the drive-through window to the right side of the building. What that did is two things, one, it lengthened the queue line. They claimed that they had sufficient queuing space anyhow, because industry standard apparently is six cars, and they, and Popeyes' historical data shows that four cars are what usually is the max that usually queues up in their rush hour time. But, by putting the window over on the other side, they have a significantly longer queuing line. Secondly, where that drive-through discharges, on the original plans, it seemed to discharge into the back of the building near East Main Street, and there were parking spaces that are located right there, and the discharge seemed to almost, almost focus that traffic directly into the parking spaces. So, that seemed to be a little dangerous. Now, they've discharged it on the right side of the building, up to the, toward the front of the, of the building, and while it still discharges into an area where there are adjacent parking spaces, it's similar to just about any parking space within a shopping center.
It looks like there's about 24 feet in between where it discharges to the actual start of the parking spaces.
On the original parking, on the original plans, where it discharged into parking spaces toward the rear of the building, it seemed a lot less, you know, it seemed to be a lot less room. And, so, to my eye, those were the two significant changes. And, in my opinion, they do make the plan better than the original plan, but you may be able to pick up some other differences.
Commissioner Fuller.
Yeah, I remember that was the big difference between the original plan and the proposed revision plan, which is much closer to this. It was almost like they made it perpendicular, they almost put it at a 90-degree angle, so the long length of the building matched up easier with traffic patterns than the short width of the building.
I'm not sure that they, I thought that too, originally, Dave, that they had flipped the building 90 degrees.
Yeah, to kind of fit within that parking lot easier, or, you know...
They may have moved the location of the building to fit easier, I don't think that they flipped it upon my recent review of the original plans, I don't think they flipped it. But it seems to me like they changed the location somewhat to make, to blend in with the traffic patterns, and to make it less potentially hazardous.
It's not a very large building either.
No.
They're usually not, just looking at Popeyes throughout the state of Connecticut. I know the one on Black Rock, Fairfield Avenue and Black Rock, is the same owner, so that might give you a sense of kind of proportionality of what the building might look like.
I know, the one on Fairfield Avenue, yeah.
Fairfield Ave.
It is a pretty good...
That's the one on...
It is a pretty good-sized building, though.
On North Ave?
No, on Fairfield.
I'm sorry, I missed what you said.
I said it is a pretty good-sized building on Fairfield Avenue.
You know what it is with the Fairfield Avenue one, if you look at it, it's right up to the road. It's, there's really no setback to the road, it's right there. And so, when you're driving, it's right on top of you, pretty much. And I think it might even look bigger than what it is because of that, the visual.
Yeah, it's a little different from the other buildings on Fairfield Avenue in that area, too, it's a little more space between the building, the setback, and the sidewalks and everything. You have to Stop &amp; Shop in the post office, they're set way back.
Way back.
And it's not until you get to, like, where Carpenter and Wallace, and Brennan's, and all those shops, or until you have shops again on the side, like, right up to the sidewalks. So, I know sometimes it's a little bit of an optical, I don't want to say illusion, but just kind of like the differences in setbacks sometimes make things look bigger or smaller than they actually are.
Just for clarification, really quick, this versus existing building, this corner here, is that that 203 Urgent Care?
I don't know, I don't have a set.
Okay, is this where the old Blockbuster video, is this the building they're talking about, or is this Stop &amp; Shop over here, and that building's over here? That's what I'm trying to figure out.
No, on the map that you're looking at, Stop &amp; Shop would be right toward the top.
So, this is the, where the old Blockbuster?
That strip area where Blockbuster used to be, and I forget what's in there now.
And Fairfield Pizza, okay, just to get an idea, thank you.
Let me ask, Attorney Flora, is, was there any mention, because, you know, this is like, right in the middle of a parking lot.
I think.
How's that, is there any, how's that going to coordinate construction with people wanting to go to wherever they're going at that time, you know what I mean? Because people are going to want to go to Stop &amp; Shop and all those other things, there's going to be some coordination, I hope, was that, like, was there a little discussion on that, was there any stip yet put on that? Even though it might be out of my realm, but I mean, it's quite a little undertaking for that little area.
I don't recall any discussion before the commission as to the, what's going to happen during the construction period, and I know that I haven't had any discussion with Attorney Willinger about that either. Obviously, there may be sections of 20.2 that talk about that type of a thing, where you could establish a reasonable condition with respect to construction during the, during the process. Now, keep in mind, this is a, this is a building that is being constructed upon a parcel of land that's owned by the existing corporation, it's the landlord for Stop &amp; Shop and all of the other stores. So, my hunch, and probably more than a hunch, is my belief is that in the construction, there are already conditions imposed by the owner of the real estate who doesn't want construction to affect the consumers that are patronizing these other places, especially Stop &amp; Shop. So, I'm sure that there are private restrictions that are going to be on this, but you may find in section 20.2, the ability to establish such a reasonable condition if you feel that it's a, you know, it's a concern.
Do we happen to know a construction timeframe?
I don't. I only know that they, they would like to get going on this, but they, according to what Jade says tonight, they may, they may not be able to start as quickly as they want because of the state requirement that they face.
Yeah, I guess what I'm just trying to figure out is how long will the construction take once a start-to-finish product?
I don't know, my, well, Mark would know more than us, being in the construction trade, but my guess is that it would be a few months anyhow.
Commissioner.
I know, I have to be very quick, I saw both the, when Popeyes, both of them, the North Ave and the Fairfield Ave ones, and Bridgeport, when they weren't there compared to when they were, and also the Taco Bell and some other similar things, I think it was like 60 and 90 days from shovel in the ground to a structure being, being pretty much finalized right before they opened up for business.
Yeah, I would say a few months. It's not an, it doesn't appear to be an overly complex building, or an overly large building. I don't think that it would take any appreciable amount of time to construct it, although getting the permits necessary from the various parties in order to do that may be a little bit longer.
I don't know, the one on North Avenue, but the one on Fairfield Avenue stands by itself, so, you know, they probably didn't have too many restrictions as far as trucks going in and out, you know, whereas, whereas at Stop &amp; Shop, they might have some restrictions.
They may, but as a standalone on North Avenue, if it is North Avenue, that also is a state road, so, you know, now you're worrying about curb cuts and permission from the DOT for things like that, and access onto a public highway, where you don't have here, because this is in, within the shopping center. So, in some respects, it might have been easier, but in some respects, it might have been more difficult.
I just have one other thing here, you're going to love this one here, because it comes up again. They have a 1,500-gallon grease separator tank, we have, of course, another confined space area, and now that one's completely different, that, I don't know, maybe we're going to have to go down a different road here, because we've got to make people aware of these things, because it's not what's going on when they're built, it's after what happens, and what happens to the person that goes down there.
Maybe Jade has a knowledge of what's in the zoning regulations regarding safety for people who have to work on things like that. I don't, as I stand here tonight, but if there's nothing in the zoning regulations, this is the board that, you know, legislatively adopts or modifies zoning regulations, so it's something you might want to look into.
Yeah, there's nothing in the regulate, I know we talked about this a little bit last week, there's nothing in the regulations for that, all that stuff is, as I'm sure you know much more about this than I do, it's regulated through the building permit process and state, state building codes.
I know, but you know, it's coming up everywhere, now that I'm here, I see it everywhere, and I want to talk about the other ones that went by, and it's after is when it happens, because there's nobody there to regulate them, you know, I mean, I don't know where we have to put it, I don't know if you have to have them come and get a permit through the town, I mean, that's a whole nother, I just don't want anybody to get hurt, and that's where, and that's where it's happening, in these confined spaces. You know, I mean, maybe the signage again, we can do signage, but where's that going to go? That's all. Matter of fact, it's on there for the record, I hope.
Commissioner Posner.
One of my major concerns is safety during construction. And I know that this Stop &amp; Shop is a very heavily populated parking lot, there's, usually it's hard to get a spot, tons of kids, tons of parents running around, trying to get to their cars. Is, is there a way we can stipulate, I think it was asked already, but can we stipulate conditions on the construction part of it? Just because I'm wondering, is there going to be a truck access road for all their construction vehicles? Or are they going to be using the same access road here off East Main Street that all the patrons of the shopping center are using?
That's a good question, because like I said, it was never addressed in anything that I've seen. I mean, we certainly can reach out and find out to see if their plans have crystallized to such an extent that they've considered the issue, I can do that.
I think on the plan, if you look, they're coming in through the access road, they have the truck there, and then you'll see they have an anti-tracking pad right as they make that first left, like, as you were going to go into the drive-through, so it looks like they're just going to use that, and they have another tracking pad in the back half so they can come back around, so, just by the print with the tracking pads, I think they're going to just go through that route like that.
They'll have their own dedicated entrance, egress and entrance. And, you know, these construction sites where there's already a lot of activity, they're often, almost always, when I've seen them in my construction experience, they're always very isolated, so that there's very little interaction between any construction vehicles, vans, workers, and the remaining uses that are on the site. It'll almost be impossible for any car to get near any of the construction.
I ask that just because the building is surrounded by parking on at least three sides here, and there's a shopping center here, and then there's Stop &amp; Shop in front of it, and Stop &amp; Shop spills over to the parking lot that's in front of that shopping center, especially when it's busy, which is usually every day. So, what I want to make sure is, is this going to be gated off, fenced off, you know... So what I wanna make sure is, is this gonna be gated off, fenced off, you know, is, is there gonna be safety, you know, measures put in?
Yeah, I, I, I can't answer that, and I don't think Jay can, but again, my experience...
Best interest to protect their own, their own liability with any accidents, I think it's certainly their best interest to do that.
My experience is, I've always seen these construction sites with fencing around it.
Yeah, that's what I wanna make sure. The armed fencing, something to protect.
Right, right, exactly. Now, I can reach out and find that out, if they, like I said, if they've crystallized.
Just because it's a very heavy traffic parking lot, a lot of kids, a lot of adults going through it, walking through it, getting to their cars, and I just wanna make sure that, that all safety measures are put into place for this construction.
Right.
I just have one more, quick one there, with Attorney Flork, when you get...
Go ahead, I'm listening.
I know, it's writing and listening. Would there be, I know there's a, quite a busy bus stop over there too, so would we have, I would like to see, you know, a little more maybe signage up or something, because people are gonna wanna cut a, walk across to go get their chicken.
Is, yeah, is the bus stop?
The bus stop, I think they moved the bus stop up a little, didn't they?
I don't know.
I mean, in front of Walmart, they moved it up.
Yeah, but it's still on that side, so I'm sure they're gonna wanna walk back and forth, so do we have any stip there that, I mean, you know, we gotta have a...
Well, they were gonna have a walkway, aren't they gonna have a walkway from...
They were gonna have a walkway...
From the corner.
Correct, into Popeyes.
Now, that's, now that's gonna cause trouble with people, there's gonna be like parking spaces next to that. I didn't look at, at today's, just 'cause there's no space here to do that.
Right, right.
So that we have to look at too, I would think.
I would think it do.
Because the sidewalk, we wanna make sure that there's safety with, with people parking.
What, what type of signage did you have in mind?
Just, you know, people are gonna be, you know, in a, it's a crosswalk and it might need to be restriped, 'cause, you know, it's not as bright as it used to be.
I think that whole corner needs to have some.
But again, that, there's a difference between what they can do on site and the roadway itself, which undoubtedly requires State Traffic Commission permission.
The bus in Stop and Shop does, it just picks up and drops off at the other side. But I'm talking about on Walmart, you know, on East Main, they look like they moved it up a little bit. Used to be at the corner, but they moved it up.
It's kinda like across the old gas station.
Yes, a little further, yeah.
Madam Chair. Is there anybody here today representing Popeyes? Or any?
No.
Nobody here in the audience representing Popeyes?
No, and, and the reason for that is this is essentially administrative session, so they wouldn't be able to...
No, we could, we, we could waive the rules to speak with them.
Yeah, you could. Yeah, you, you could. On the other hand, if you did that, you might be setting yourself up if somebody was really opposed to it and, and use that as a, as a point of appeal, but the rule for administrative session is that, you're, you're not supposed to accept any evidence other than the technical evidence provided by, you know, town attorneys, zoning authorities, police authorities, et cetera, et cetera.
No, the reason I'm asking is I think some of these questions might be actually able to be answered by them.
Commissioner Fuller, did you have a question?
Uh, no, it was already answered.
Anybody have any more comments?
So if you don't feel you're prepared to act tonight, and I don't think you are, what I would do is table it tonight, but put it on your next administrative session for September 9th, 10th, whatever that, whatever that is. And study the issue, and then hopefully we'll be able to finalize it at that point in time.
With that said, do I have a, a motion to table?
So move, Madam Chair.
Fuller, do I have a second?
Second.
Juliana. Thank you.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Thank you.
Four zero. Let's see, number two, three, and four is a continuance from the petitioner. Number five, 411 Barnum Cut Off Fright Haven. Discussion. Do they...
Oh, yes, Madam Chair.
No, you're good.
Sorry, folks, this is the administrative session, this is not technically a public hearing. This is more for commission to deliberate between the commission and town staff about the lesser intense issues. I took a look at the letter, I'm a little familiar with Fright Haven, they, I think they had something in West Haven that was very well done. This is also consistent with other activities the commission has approved in that location, like the carnival, like, like some other things. I don't see any major issues with this.
This is a year round? Or, I, I know they put...
It's a holiday, it's a Halloween sort of fall poogie house.
If you go to page four of their handout, it shows their proposed dates, it's a temporary use, it looks like it's one, two, three, four, five, six weekends.
No dates though of, of operation, right?
The dates, the dates are there.
No, not the dates, the times, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Time of operation.
I don't see the times, it may be listed on here.
Okay. Madam Chair. I read through this for the Fright Haven, you know, and I'm not quite sure why this didn't go to a public hearing. And also, besides a public hearing, I, I think there's questions that need to be asked that we can't answer here, unless we waive the rules to actually ask those questions, if there's anybody here representing Fright Haven.
I, I kinda agree with him, because they're here and there's a lot of questions, and he's kinda right, I think, it didn't go to a hearing, and I, I do believe, are those the people here?
Okay. I wanna make a motion to waive the rules to, to ask questions if they're willing to answer.
And I, I'll second that, absolutely.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? You, you can come up to the, to the podium, just state your name and your address for the records.
Hello, everybody, my name is Daniel Levine, and I'm here to propose the operation of a professional Halloween attraction at the Stratford Square. It'll be located at the former Bally's Gym, and prior to that, it was the, I guess, the Showcase Cinemas. And we feel that we plan, our priority of course, is to make sure it's a safe environment for our visitors, and it's actually a, an excellent location for us. It's at the end of the shopping center, plenty of parking, no cars going through. We plan to have the Stratford Police, as well as the Fire Department, monitor the place with us during operating hours, and it, we, we, again, our priority is to make sure that we maintain a, a very safe environment for everybody.
Hey, hi, how are you?
Hello.
Couple of quick questions.
Sure.
Hours of operation, I see the dates, but I don't see hours of operation. I might be missing it?
I...
I'm sorry, hours of operation? I see the dates here.
The hours of operation, pretty much sundown, so I would say seven o'clock to 11 o'clock.
And you said, police are gonna be there for the entirety?
We, during operations, we, we like to hire...
Are, as I say, are you hiring the police for that?
Yes.
For public safety?
Yes.
Okay.
You know, it's a proceeds, portion, portion of the proceeds will be going to, to Mothers Against Drunken Drivers, as well as the Stratford Police Athletic. I'm not sure of the whole things, they, they took care of that part.
And, is there any, is there any construction that needs to be done inside?
No, no alterations whatsoever.
Or to the outside of the building?
No, none whatsoever. And actually, the signage, we're taking care of, because we, we're trying to reserve the billboard that's right above, so we're all set with that as well.
That's, is that one level building?
It is one level.
And I believe we were given a, a plan for it, correct? We were given a...
Floor plan?
Yeah, floor plan.
Yeah.
And because of our experience in the past, we make sure we have plenty of, plenty of egress totally surrounding the, the whole, the whole event. So, like I said, our, our first priority is to make sure it's a safe environment, and that's what we're doing.
Does the Fire Department require to go in just before they open, Jay, do you know? How does that work?
Have you been in contact with the Fire Department?
Absolutely. I mean, they, they, they won't let us ever open our doors until they go through, I mean, they're, he quoted, I quote him, he would make sure, he would try to burn everything to make sure that everything is flame retardant, I mean, that's, it's a priority, you know? But that's, that's our, our goal, like I said, is to make sure everything's a safe environment.
So, am I under the impression that you're just gonna rent it through October? Is that how that goes?
That's correct, that's correct. We, we plan to do a month to month, not as an event, but just to keep things there.
Maybe to do something else, or some...
We, we actually thought about doing possibly a, a Christmas event, it sits on the plans and we haven't gone any further with that, like a, like a, a walk through, a Christmas event. It's just, it's just a possibility, but we haven't confirmed.
Okay, so this, this proposal is just from...
This proposal is strictly for the...
From September through the end of October?
Exactly, the Halloween.
Okay.
Now, it's a haunted house, right?
We like to refer to it as a professional Halloween attraction.
Usually haunted houses are dark, usually haunted houses are dark inside.
Yes, our, our, our visitors will call this a haunted house.
Okay. So, usually they're dark inside. What I'm wondering is, is there, in this building, is there a sprinkler system?
There is.
And is it working? Is it, the Fire Department's checked it out?
Actually, I went in the back to check everything out, and I, I may have to call the sprinkler system to come again, but the last time it was inspected was actually less than a year ago. So I'll check with the Fire Department whether they still need it to be, they probably will anyway, but it's, this, you know what, I, I probably would prefer them to check it again anyway. But it's, it's, the building is in excellent condition, so...
The reason I ask is because with a haunted house, you have a, a pretty high occupancy at one time inside there, and with it being, the lighting being low or dark, you know, it's, it's kind of a maze, a haunted house.
It is.
And, and I can see here, it's a maze, if I look at this, I could draw a pencil through it.
Mm-hmm.
So, so what I'm saying is that I just wanna know about the safety measures that are gonna be put in place at, you know, God forbid there's a fire, or, or some kind of emergency, an emergency, emergency personnel need to get into there. What kind of safety measures are being put in place?
Well, one of the things that we do, we make sure, for example, there are plenty of emergency exits. Every maze, as you look at the, the plan there, we have to have emergency lights placed at every particular area to make sure, God forbid, there is a fire, the people have to have an access to get out. It's great that there are so many doors that are already in place that are emergency exits, so this is what we do. So it's, it's, it's easy for anyone to get out, God forbid.
So you have like a professional team of builders that will construct this attraction et cetera here?
Yes.
So they're, they're like people you've dealt with all the time, so they actually, you actually, they actually know what they're doing constantly when you go put all this up inside there, correct?
Yes.
After reading the proposal, you did indicate that, you know, when there are certain issues like children who are scared or whatever, there's, you have all that kind of in place on what to do with your...
Yeah, actually, we, we plan on having what they call a, a lights, a special for, for children, and what you do is you turn on all the lights, and they still walk through it. It's, so we, we do that purposely. But yes, there are plenty, there are exits constantly, emergency exits, if anyone should panic, they go out, and there's a common, the way the egress works is, it's 360 degrees around the whole premise. So there are actors who are constantly moving around that 360 degrees, so in case anyone does get scared, they can easily go, and one of the actors will escort them out.
How, I don't, did Commissioner Posner ask you this? I wasn't, I was looking at, how many people would you have there on your end at night when this is going on, like, would you employ to be there? 'Cause you must have quite the traffic flow, so you must have maybe X amount of your own employees there to monitor this so nothing happens.
Absolutely.
So it's like, can you just say like, you know, offhand, how many people you have there, of your employees on a given night?
It could be anywhere between 50 to 100.
Of your own people?
Yes. You know, it's...
Between being the actors and helping people, you know, somebody could freak out or something and they get them out.
There are also a lot, a lot of volunteers who'd like to be part of this.
No, I just wanted to know, thank you.
You can volunteer as well.
What? What? I, I just have a question again about safety. How many security or police personnel will you be having there? I guess an hour or each time the attraction runs?
Well, in, in...
At one time, maybe?
In our, in our past events, we, we had anywhere between two, two to three police officers.
Are they located inside or outside the building?
Some are located outside, some located inside. The majority of them are actually located outside, because it's something where they feel that they can do their job better from outside, you know? They're also there sometimes to protect ourselves, because someone gets scared and they may hit one of our, our actors.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely, it goes both ways.
So it's, it's just something, so, yeah, they're there and, and it's, it's great, it's great to have them, people feel safe about it, and as well as the Fire Marsh, you know, not the Fire Marsh, but the Fire Department as well. So this is, this is something that we do, just to make sure everything, again, we want everyone to come in, enjoy themselves, and go back home in a safe manner.
They probably help with the control of the people outside.
Yes.
The crowd control when the kids first get there.
But this place is great, because like I said, we're at the end, I, I don't have to worry about cars, that's my biggest fear sometimes, is when people go back and, you know, you're in the area.
Dropping them off or...
Yeah, it's, it's not like that here, it's, you know, we're at the very end, and it's, you know, no cars are driving through.
I don't know if this is in our purview to ask, but I'm, I'm going to ask this, and have you had any incidents in the past on record, whether problems with, with, I don't know, fights or, or, or police incidents and legal issues or anything in any other locations you've been at?
None, none whatsoever.
No incidents?
I'm glad to say that.
No incidents on record?
Not, nothing on record or off record.
And again, how many years have you been doing this?
The first haunt we had was in 2008.
Okay, and this is the first time in Stratford?
This is the first time in Stratford.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
And the other thing is like, you only have like 24 days to get this going, it looks like.
Yes, it, it's, like I said, we, we have some great people and we, we can put, put it together fairly quick. And, and like I said, after everything is set up, we still have to have the, the Fire Marshals go through, inspect the whole thing to make sure that everything is done properly.
Any more discussion?
I'm good.
I'm good.
Do I make a motion, does somebody like to make a motion?
Oh, yes, Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve this with a couple stipulations that they, just really reinforce the police and Fire Marshal oversight of the, of the project. This is a reputable business, has been doing this for, for eight years now, but I just wanna reinforce the public safety standpoint, even though it's obvious, even though it's something you always are willing to comply with, but just to reinforce it, that, that you do hire police professionals and that there is a Fire Department, and I guess a Building Department review of it of some kind too, just to make sure everything is, is good to go on this.
Very good.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Do we take a vote? Any more discussion first, then we'll take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Four zero.
Have fun.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Have fun.
Yeah, I won't be there.
Let's take my little cousins. There are some...
Campsite review 900 access road is on contingents. Zoning enforcement study complaints, any, none?
Uh, actually, I do have something I wanna talk about.
Okay.
Um, I brought it up to zoning enforcement quite a few times and I mean, I think I may have even mentioned it here at this meeting. I'm gonna say it again. Corner of Homestead Avenue and Ferry Boulevard. The old Parpools building. There is a man and it looks like a child, living in a camper on the property. This has been going on now for months. I've brought it up to...
First I've heard of it, but I'll make sure...
I've brought it up to the zoning enforcement officer.
What's the address?
This is, uh, the corner of Homestead Avenue and Ferry Boulevard. It was the old Parpools. And there's a camper on the property. There was, uh, just, the property was so blighted looking. There was a sign on the ground that's been removed now. Um, it's not being maintained landscaping. There were unregistered vehicles parked, vans parked all over the property. Some of them have been moved now because I've been following up on this over and over again with John. But there was still, it looks like a family living in a camper, full of trash on the property. Lawn chairs out there, just trash all over. It looks terrible on that corner. And I've been getting a lot of complaints from, you know, neighbors in, in my neighborhood. I live on Homestead Avenue and my constituents have been complaining nonstop about it to me. That something needs to change. I mean, not to get too graphic, but one of the, I guess, the people living there, a man, has been spotted outside early in the morning, just walking around in underwear from his camper to the building. So, I'm gonna bring this out public now because I have asked for it to be addressed over and over again. I know the zoning enforcement officer's gone there and he said, "You can't be living in the camper on this site." Um, it's like, but it continues. So this needs to be addressed.
And since I've been here since February, this is the first I've heard of it, but I'll make sure that our zoning enforcement officer goes out and addresses it this week.
Commissioner Fuller?
So it's just to be clear, someone living on the, on the property in a camper, there are no longer unregistered motor vehicles there?
I believe there might be some vehicles without license plates just sitting there. It was what it was, it was, it was a truck yard and that's not allowed in that property anyway. It was just vans. It was like storage of vehicles and that's, that's not what it's zoned for, that property. So, um, uh, some of those were taken care of. There are still some vehicles there. There's still a camper there with, I don't know, it was a family or a few people living in it. The property looks terrible and blighted and, uh, something needs to be done about it.
Okay, we'll send someone up.
Thank you.
I don't know if this has to do with zoning. Um, I discussed before that, um, that Main Street project with the, um, meters. I don't know, can we, how do we approach that? The one, the one near Wendy's, that project that, it's up there and...
Oh, the condos?
I mean...
Yeah, the meters are just like, it looks horrible. The meters are, are facing...
It, it's not something that zoning is gonna be able to take care of. Most likely that was a building code or fire code. There was something that, that told them they're allowed to put it there. My recommendation was that maybe a representative from their, their district, a council person, go and talk to them and say, "Hey, I know you've got a great building. We would love to see some plantings be put in front of this, make your building look better," or whatever it is.
And it's got a wa, it's got a, like a walkway up to it. But I can't believe they can't cover that somehow with lattice board or something. Okay. Who's, does anybody know whose district that might be?
I, I think that might be either, uh, Councilwoman DeBonte or Councilman Kadim. I don't know where the district line is drawn, but it might be worth to raise it up to both of them. Maybe someone has a better, uh, point of contact with the, with the property owner. I wanna address also the Parpools thing too, something else might have come up. It sounds like it's larger than a zoning issue or a zoning enforcement issue. There could be some health department issues. If there's a family there, it could be an education issue, child welfare issue. I think this needs to be followed up with the police. And I would make that recommendation that you talk to the police chief.
Talk to public safety, the police and, and the health department.
I don't know. Where, where? Where'd you say?
Uh, the Parpools, the old Parpools, which is, uh, Homestead, uh, corner of Homestead, Ferry Boulevard.
The one that you were talking about?
Yes, the one I was talking about.
What's called the old what?
There is a, there is a...
No, the, the old park pools?
Parpools used to be there.
It used to be a company.
Parpools?
Well, we don't know what the company is now because there's no signage, there's no company. All it is is stored vehicles and a camper with, like a family living in it, with windows knocked out of the building. So, I mean, it's...
There's anything, anything in the zoning regulations that they're violating, we'll go out, we'll, we'll address it from our angle.
Yeah, but I do agree with Commissioner Fuller that this might be a, a public safety and, and a health department issue as well. Especially if there's a child, child welfare, there's a child living there. I, I think we need to go a little bit further with this. It's, do our due diligence to make sure everything there is, uh, is okay.
Anything else? Accessory apartment applications? None? Sedimentation and erosion control applications?
No.
None? Planning projects, Greenway, well, that's right up my alley. The Stratford, I mean, the, um, Traffic Authority is meeting on September 15th to make hopefully a judgment on our Elm Street passway. Um, I know Complete Streets is help, is working with us and, um, we're trying to get it to at least get one side of the street on Elm and then parking only on one side. So that's still going before this, the, um, Traffic Authority. And that meeting is September 15th, so we'll know more then. Goal settings, signs. The Stratford engine plant property, no, no information on that.
No, nothing new.
Medical marijuana, previous...
I actually have some questions about this. Um, has the planning commission met to discuss or appoint people to this board? I mean, I'm tired of waiting. We have a moratorium that's gonna lapse. When's planning gonna act? If not, we'll just propose a regulation.
Agreed.
I agree.
Jay, I'm asking, you, you, you clerked that meeting. Have they done anything?
Well, they didn't meet last month. And I think every time we talk, it ends up being, uh, some more research needs to be done and...
That's the point of the committee.
And the, the last that I thought we left off was that the two chairs were going to reach out to other towns, find out what they've done, um, and organize, or whoever is gonna be, whoever's sitting on each one of these two committees from each board is gonna be organizing people to come in and speak, speak.
But that's the point. Well, zoning appointed people, planning was supposed to appoint people. We don't even know who planning appointed. It's not even in their minutes. I mean, what the hell?
They, they haven't appointed anybody.
How do we meet if there's no committee?
Well, I mean, there's two chairmen and, you know, people can talk.
And we have...
Without, without there being a committee formed, people can reach out and...
And we have one chairman that, that wants to move forward and take care of this. And then we have another chairman that's avoiding it on the planning commission. That's exactly what's happening.
I think you have your answer.
Yeah.
Right?
Right, Crystal Havy?
So, so in the meantime, right, with Commissioner Fuller here, we just had Milford move in on it. We have some places, there's only three or places right now. We are losing revenue like you wouldn't believe. And it's gonna be a bigger thing coming up with this, with all the other stuff that's added on to it. And here we are, worrying about our tax base and we have maybe one person on a board that's got his head stuck in the sand. That's what it is. I mean, you know, by the time we do it, every town around us is gonna have it and who's gonna wanna come here? Nobody. Cause they're gonna go to Milford.
At this point, do we need the planning commission? Can we go forward without the planning commission?
I make the recommendation that the previous draft of the zo, uh, medical marijuana regulations be placed on the agenda and we'll just discuss it as a zoning commission. I'm tired of waiting. That was, the whole point of this committee was to explore the issue, to see if it's a good thing or bad thing for the town, economically, socially, medically, legally, whatever it might be. So other points of view could get brought in, not just zoning, make a, a decision. This was zoning's attempt to bring in more voices, to be more transparent. And it requires planning commission because it is a text amendment. And here's the planning commission refusing to act, so zoning's gonna have to take the lead on this.
Has anybody, I mean, have they, has anybody seen the articles? I mean, the, the numbers are staggering from 2012 and like I said, it's people getting their head out of the sand. More doctors are doing this, there's more, uh, whatever the places are to cultivate it going up. I mean, it's a whole thing that we're just fiddling away while Rome burns.
In addition to that, Donald Trump says he's for medical marijuana. Hillary Clinton says she's for medical marijuana. If by chance Gary Johnson has a third party candidate or Jill Stein has a third party candidate, Libertarian and Green, you think they're against it, the next president, whoever it's gonna be, is for it. So the whole legal issue of, of the Controlled Substance Act, while the Obama administration has doubled down on it, the next president, woo. So it, it, it's coming by hook or by crook. I, it, it makes more sense to do something with it.
I, I did, Jay, just for the heck of it, I did some checking up. I have senior citizens in my neighborhood that are doing this. They need it, all right? And they're senior citizens. I'm like, holy cow. And they're like, "I'm tired of traveling. I wanna go somewhere close." And the money is like, would they tell me what they're spending, but you know, the insurance and whatever, that's a whole nother... I was like, "You gotta be kidding me." So I sat down with them and I took some notes and I'm like, "Yeah, I mean, this is like, like I said, somebody gotta get their head out of the sand here." And, and we gotta move it along because I'm sure we have places in parts of town where we could do it that's not gonna be interfering with anything, you know?
And what I don't want is what happened in Milford with the River Street facility. Milford has no zoning regulations for medical marijuana. So that's why the Department of Consumer Protection went in there and went, "Whoop, let's just look at a map, not talk to anybody, put a medical marijuana in, in a residential neighborhood. That's not a responsible way to handle it." Responsible way to handle it is to have a town, look at where's the appropriate location in this town, if it should be in that town to begin with. And that was the whole point of the committee, so we could get health department officials and legal officials and members of the public to give their two cents to it. I mean, and here's, zoning is look, is willing to look at the issue, no matter how it's decided. What, I mean, planning is a part during this and I, this, it takes two to dance. But i- if we need to do a solo, we'll do solo.
Can we put that on the agenda, like as a line?
Sure.
Well, back, back, what? Beginning of the year, it was the beginning of the year and we had a public hearing on the moratorium. And, but on record, I'm happy to say, I'm the only one that voted against extending the moratorium. So now here we are, almost a year later, I remember asking, what was done the year prior from the zoning commission and the planning commission? What kind of research did you do to get answers for when it was gonna come up again for the extension for the moratorium? And I was told, "Well, we were busy and there really wasn't much that was done."
Gary, Gary, you'd have an outline.
But, but here we are, here we are, almost a year later again, and...
Well, cause we keep...
What have we done? What have we done? So, so at this point, you know, I, I'm in favor of, if we can, abolishing that moratorium at this point.
Well...
And then, we can decide, once an application comes in front of us, once an application comes in front of us, then we can decide and put stipulations. But I think at this point, it's time to take, take away the moratorium. And can we do that today? Can we put that up for a vote today?
No, we can't because that would require a public hearing going back to the planning commission.
So I suggest it goes to a public hearing then, again.
I would also, uh, some of it is that's not entirely accurate. If there is no moratorium, which is why there was wisdom in the moratorium, to craft a policy. Zoning has done a lot. Zoning proposed a regulation. It didn't pass because not enough information was done. But it looked at Newington, it looked at Sheldon, it looked at, I wanna say Bloomfield or Windsor, but one of those towns up there. Um, what it felt like it was overstepping its authority, wherever, um, because of the federal Controlled Substance Act. Well, it looks like the next president's gonna do something with that. And then, what, what was planning's role? What was the town council's role? What's the various town departments' roles? So this was the zoning commissions was actually being kind. It was actually being generous, trying to open it up to everyone else. But no one wanted to deal with the issue. What I propose is, let's bring back the regulation before we abolish the moratorium because the way how the moratorium is crafted, once we have a regulation, the moratorium's no void to begin with. Cause if we don't have a moratorium right now, say, ideal timeline, we're able to strike it tonight hypothetically. Then if any retail center, which is already retail, could get it without any zoning oversight by right. So then we'd remove any sort of town oversight and any sort of public input and sort of use. When Rite Aid went in for Brooks, they didn't require any zoning because it was pharmacy retail going into pharmacy retail. That's the wisdom of having a regulation.
Thank you for the explanation.
I did a lot of research on this and then the planning commission punted the mayors against it. Town council has not let much of a voice, maybe some individual was. But it, it's time to act, three years. Let's do something. So with that said, I'll forward the text amendment to, to the planning and zoning administrator and to everyone here. Let's use that as a draft, work on that, what we like about it, what we don't like about it. And then let's, let's, in a month or two, let's weed that out and then put it, no pun intended, and then put that to a public hearing.
Agreed. Agreed.
Commissioner Fuller?
We need a second. I'm with you, second it. I mean, it, it, it's over, come on. How long are we gonna kick this can down the road? I mean, Mr. Fuller is, Commissioner Fuller is right on, on the whole thing.
It was motion placed, actually, something on the agenda. I don't know, uh, how, yeah.
Motion to put it on the agenda? Do I have a second?
And it was specifically the previously, uh, drafted zoning regulations for medical marijuana. I have a copy of it. I'll, I'll distribute that.
The one that Gary wrote?
Yeah.
I, I have it too, I'm sure, in my archives.
So just, so that would get it going again and, and we would...
We could tweet that?
Cause that wasn't on at that time, that we would just be able to get away from. There's two entities there. One of them isn't, okay.
Because just for, just for members of, of Johnny Q Public out there, the way how a zoning amendment works, if you wanna change anything in the zoning regulations. Uh, the first step is there has to be a regulation to change or to add or to subtract. That starts in zoning, uh, the actual procedural motion starts in zoning. Though a member of the public could petition to have that. A member of the public could bring it to the commission. So the zoning commission votes to put it to a public hearing, two things happen in that. One, it goes to a public hearing, but the se, the more immediate thing is it goes to the planning commission for their review. Depending on how planning commission deliberates on the topic. And there may or may not be a public hearing to that, that's really up to planning commission bylaws and, and regulations. If they vote favorably to approve the text amendment, it require, it comes back to zoning for that public hearing and it would only require a three-vote majority. If planning commission fail, uh, votes unfavorably, then it require a four-vote supermajority override by the zoning commission. If adopted, then I believe, I don't know what the timeline is for it to be officially enacted as a policy, but it's within a month. It might even be the next day. Um, but I know it's pretty quick.
Fifteen days in the data publication.
Okay, so it's usually within the first immediate 10 days, whenever it gets, the legal notice is published in the post.
So, do we need to take a vote, Madam Chair? I, there was a, there was a motion and there was a second.
Second, to put it on the agenda.
Yeah, so...
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four zero. Methadone clinic moratorium.
This one, I think, um, we should take them one at a time. Um, we're much quicker, we're actually much more far ahead of the game on medical marijuana than on methadone. I don't even know where to begin with. I don't even know where to begin with, with addressing methadone. It's a fundamentally different use than medical marijuana. We're talking cultivation dispensaries for medical marijuana with methadone clinics. We're talking full outpatient, possibly inpatient services here. So I think this is something that a moratorium moving forward would be prudent until we really figure out what to do.
Parking? Oh, any further, any further discussion? Parking?
Well, wasn't each commissioner kind of volunteered for one of these items on this, on this list here? So someone was in charge of signs. I was in charge of the Army Engine Corps. There was two people or one person for, one person for medical marijuana, one for methadone, and another was for parking calculations, who I said I would work with.
Parking was former Commissioner Henrik.
No, we did this, we did this two months, it was just a month or two ago.
I don't remember doing that after that.
Where was I?
Yeah, I don't remember. Remember we did it back?
I remember when we changed the whole, we got rid of all the, we basically revised this whole list.
Yeah, and this is the revised list.
This is the revised list that we just did a few-
But I don't think we assigned different commissioners to every single one since we revised it.
Yeah.
No, we didn't, and it just never really materialized all the way yet. We were kind of, kind of had our-
Go back and look at the minutes to see who volunteered for what. I don't remember offhand, but I just wanted to mention that.
I remember Commissioner Phillips was, decided to take the leadership on the sign issue.
On the sign issue, and you and I were doing the medical marijuana.
I'm doing Army Engine Corps.
And I'm floating in between whoever needs help.
And I volunteered to help whoever was going to work on revising parking calculations for the zoning-
There was nobody assigned to parking since Mike Henrik.
I don't think I was-
We did this two months ago. Mike Henrik, I wasn't here two months ago.
There was no one assigned to parking from what I remember.
I'll, I'll just go back and look at the minutes.
Yeah, we'll go back and look at the minutes.
This is something that we don't have to deliberate and discuss tonight unless if there's a burning issue, we could put a ball in the play on.
Is there any parking issues at the moment that we need to talk about?
With parking?
Yeah, is there anything that we need to address currently with parking?
I remember why it was put on the agenda, because there was some, I forget which case it was, but there was some case that nullified a particular section or parts of a whole section of the parking regulations. It's not an easy fix because Stratford being an old town is, has been developed many times over. So how to untangle the parking lot, I remember Gary Lorenzen really had a hard time wrapping his brain around this from a technical standpoint. So the fart process came up, is look at particular uses of parking and just start slowly and, and as you work on that. So restaurant and particular retails that would support restaurant-like businesses. Our parking regulations are about doubly as strict as nearby towns. So that looked like the first, like bite at the apple, if you will, of addressing parking. So maybe look at restaurant parking first, tackle that one, then move on to the next parking issue. And parking's so complicated, I don't even know what the next parking issue is in terms of the zoning regulations.
Maybe we should discuss this further when Chairman Phillips is back.
I would agree with the parking. I would, I would make a motion to adjourn.
Recommend, let's just, just finish this. Recommendations to town council for requests for sidewalk repair and address flooding issue on Hamilton Avenue. Was that, was-
Didn't we formalize a motion to the town council to look at that?
I thought we did in our approval.
And then we did separately as, as this goal setting vote too. I remember we also voted on it here, so it's a standalone issue to the town council. So is there any update as the council?
Chairman, I believe, was going to draft a letter on a consensus from the commissioners and send it from, from the commission.
So we'll have to put that on the agenda for next time and see what she says. I just have one other question, I mean, one other concern. Is there any way that we can get a microphone for that podium? Because when they're standing discussing, you know, you can't hear them. They go across and you can't hear them.
It's on order by the council.
It's on order?
The council said at the last meeting that they, they're ordering some-
Because I've only listened to one tape, and as soon as he walked away, I was like, crying some-
Ordering a second mic, or they're, they're going to redo the sound system?
When, when it was brought up by somebody about the sound system, they're going to boom, 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 that.
Yeah, that's the whole, that, and that's the whole system.
They said that it's being taken care of. It's on order. So I don't know exactly what that means.
I'm talking about like a portable one on, you know?
Yeah, well, I think that as soon as we get the sound system fixed, I think you're right. I mean, we can get just another microphone hooked up and split over there.
Yeah, okay. Okay. Sounds good. Make a motion?
Motion.
Dave? All in favor?
Aye.
Four zero. Act 8909. Fuller and Juliana.
Meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.